Fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Any questions, comments, edits? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. The second item is going to be the city mission statement and two thousand and twenty-one fiscal policy. And Director Halib is going to review that with us for tonight. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Morris. This is one of the first items we do as we begin the FY twenty-one budget process. Every October, we ask the Finance Committee to review the city's mission statement and the city council fiscal policy and approve those as we start on the budget process. So I've got in the slide here the city's mission statement. This was drafted and approved in thirteen, has been affirmed by the Finance Committee each year since then, and requesting that again from the Finance Committee this evening. We'd like to take that separate or together with the fiscal policy?
If there are questions, we can take it separately. If not, we'll take it together.
Okay.
Any questions on either of those? Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion passes.
Thank you. The second item is the city council fiscal policy. The entire document is included in your packet. However, I've just included on the screen here the one proposed revision for FY twenty-one. We did include this on the agenda of the September City Council Workshop, and we did make the one revision that was requested at that time, which was to change "will" to "may" in the last sentence. But again, it is just reinforcing that the city council has, over time, tried to buttress the reserves in the general fund, not knowing what impact the state budget and fiscal crisis could have on the city. But at this point, the city council feels comfortable with the level of fund balance, and so for FY nineteen, the entire operating surplus was transferred out and transferred to capital improvement fund for capital improvements. And so this just formulates that and memorializes it as part of the fiscal policy. So any questions about the document of the proposed change? Otherwise, we'd ask for your consideration of approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Alba Moreno.
Would you, Elizabeth, excuse me, Director Halib, would you please share how the, how reserves, as they accumulate over time, are impacted by contingency funding and public works plans? Is there no impact? What, describe for everyone, what's the nature of these excesses? Why do they exist? And what is allowing us to have this annual opportunity to evaluate redirecting the funds?
Certainly. So the general fund is the primary operating fund of the city. It will include most of the city departments and most of the city staff. It's the largest fund budgeted for the city. It's about thirty-five million dollars per year. When we hit the recession years in two thousand and seven to two thousand and eight, the city had to make significant changes, primarily reductions in staff, to bring expenses down to the current revenue levels. As the economy has rebounded, it's given the city an opportunity to raise its reserve levels in the general fund, primarily at a time when there's been concern that state shared revenue from Illinois could be directed back to the state's budget and denied by the local governmental units. So we have watched that each year, allowed that fund balance reserve to raise. We haven't added back programs. We haven't added back staff without a significant conversation, which has allowed us to have some operating surpluses each year, bring those reserve levels to a higher state as a percentage of the budget, so that if those revenue losses occur based on the state, the city wouldn't have to make an immediate change in service levels. It would have time to have deliberate conversations about what changes would be appropriate. What it does do, now that the reserve levels are where they're at, it does afford the opportunity to transfer some of those reserves to the capital fund or other purposes for one-time expenses. That has proven very beneficial. For example, with the North Beach access road bluff repair, we had those reserves and were able to make those repairs and, and the repair at the level that the city council felt was appropriate. That was about two million dollars. While we did have donations, it was about a one-point-four million-dollar expenditure unanticipated for the city. So those reserve levels allow you the opportunity to react to those situations.
Thank you.
So maybe go back again. I thought you were just going to end at the, at the first one, so maybe we should re-vote on the fiscal policy to twenty twenty-one fiscal policy, just to make sure we're clear that we approve it after the questions. Motion?
I made the motion. It was seconded, and we had discussion, so I think we just need to vote.
Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We're going to go on to the two thousand and nineteen Treasurers Report. Assistant Director Diane Hall is going to make some comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Finance Committee members. Okay. Annually, the city is required by statutory requirements to compile a annual Treasurers Report, and this needs to be published in a paper, and this will be done on this Thursday in the Lake Forester. It is published in a manner that is to maintain a, to minimize publication costs, so when you see it in the paper, it is extremely small and you can't read it, but it's the, it just to save on costs there. But it is published on the city's website in its entirety, so it's a little easier to read. And a couple of years ago, the, the city council requested an easier way to see the vendors, so we've developed reports that are on the city's website that actually take the vendors and sort them in vendor order and also by dollar amount, so it's easier to read. And, and now we've also started having a, the city's check register reported on the city's website that was discussed in July. So that is now up and running, and so all the vendors are there. This is a, the vendor payments in alphabetical order that's now on the city website, and it has multiple years, so you can see the history of the vendors. We also have it by payment order from largest to smallest, so that makes it easier to read also.
Diane, could you just remind us how to get to that on the website, just in case we have people at home just with their fingers poised to...
It's under the financial documents, so if you go to the departments and to finance, we have the annual Treasurers Report. We have a lot of different financial reports there.
Yeah, I think this is a very nice step. We continue, or the Finance Department continues, to find ways to improve the transparency of our financial operations and who we're paying and what we're paying for. So I think this is very helpful, and getting on the website is equally important, so. Any questions for Assistant Director?
If we could just add to that on the next slide, just as a reminder, effective May first, two thousand and nineteen, we actually have an online check register. So also, this is available in the Financial Transparency section of the website, which you can go into the interactive charts and graphs. You're able to go here, you're able to see every single check cut as of May first, two thousand and nineteen going forward. That's updated weekly, so users can actually go on and search for certain vendors or look at specific payments. So it's quite a lot of detail. It will eliminate those summary reports we need to do beginning in FY twenty, but we'll leave the historical information on the website.
Well done. Therefore, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now we're going back to Director Halib, who's going to talk about her important topic, which is the property tax estimate for two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. So this evening is the first of five meetings at which you will consider and deliberate on the two thousand and nineteen property tax levy. Today, the City Council Finance Committee is just asked to look at a preliminary estimate of the tax levy for review and approval to be forwarded to the city council at the November Fourth Agenda, because under state statutes, we're required to adopt an estimate of the tax levy. It's non-binding, but it does set forth whether or not the city will need to proceed with a public hearing under the Truth in Taxation statute. So the worksheet is very difficult to read on the screen, but it was included in your packet. The tax cap under the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law is one-point-nine percent for those governments that are impacted by PTAL. As a home rule unit, the city is not required to remain under PTAL. However, the city has adopted an ordinance that seeks to maintain tax levy increases under PTAL, except for certain extenuating circumstances. One of those are pension obligations, so I've highlighted the police and fire funding requirements in yellow on the sheet to show you what those actuarially determined contribution requirements are for FY twenty-one and what that would mean if the increase was included on the tax levy. And I would also note that included in this chart is no estimate for new growth yet. As you know, it's a general assessment year, so some of the townships are getting in values to the county a little slower, so we don't yet have an estimated valuation for the city as a whole. But when we do, we'll have a new growth estimate to which we will add to the tax levy, and that gets split between the general and the library operating levies. So we hope to have that estimate for you at the November, November twelfth budget workshop.
Do you have any guesses?
None.
None?
No, because only three of the five townships with properties in Lake Forest have reported to the Lake, to Lake County, so we watch and monitor that. When the fifth township has submitted, we'll be able to get an estimate from the county. So what's included here is keeping, is keeping most of the line items in the levy at the one-point-nine percent applicable. You see deviations in police and fire pension. You also see deviations in debt service. That's existing bonds that are outstanding, that have a scheduled increase in debt service payments next year, requiring an increase in that levy line. Overall, the total increase projected and estimated right now is four-point-five-nine percent overall, but you can see that there are two other measures that we look at underneath that total. One is the ordinance that I referenced earlier, and so we look at a debt, a combination of the debt and capital levy, and keep that within a certain cap, and you can see it's slightly over the cap, so we'll be having that conversation on November twelfth at the budget workshop. And then the second is the Truth in Taxation. Truth in Taxation is a requirement that if you are proposing a levy increase of five percent or more over the previous year, then you have to do a specific notification in the paper and hold a public hearing, so that calculation is included as well. But you can see that the proposed levy, at least the preliminary estimate, falls below five percent, so Truth in Taxation would not be required, although we do always have Truth in Taxation, it's just not the specific statutory requirement. So this evening, we're just asking for the Finance Committee's approval of this preliminary estimate to be forwarded to the city council on November fourth. Again, both action today, as well as by the city council on November fourth, is non-binding. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council?
Just, so remind us again, when is this levy actually finalized? It's not till the spring, right?
So, no, it's actually, the statutory requirement is that the levy ordinance has to be filed with the county by the last Tuesday in December.
Oh, okay.
So you will see this on this evening's agenda. You'll have a preliminary estimate again on the November Fourth City Council Agenda. You will have detailed discussion of the levy at the November twelfth budget workshop. November eighteenth, City Council, you'll consider first reading of the tax levy ordinance, and then on December second, you'll consider final, final approval.
There we go. Maybe I should stop for a minute, see if there are any questions from members of the audience. If there are none, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. The next item, again, is Director Halib. She's been a champion of ethics. She works a lot with the Government Finance Officers Association, and she's brought this forward because she thinks it merits our adoption and to strengthen the Financial Department and financial operation of the city. So, Director Halib?
Thank you, Chairman Morris. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada is a nonprofit organization that serves over twenty thousand government finance professionals in those two countries. It is the organization that has bestowed on the city both a financial reporting award for a significant number of years, as well as the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the last few years. They offer training, they offer a support, consulting support, in addition to the award programs, and as a result of a year-long effort of reviewing the GFOA Code of Ethics in May at their annual conference, adopted this new Code of Ethics, and asked that all GFOA members, of which both Diane Hall and myself are, conduct themselves professionally in compliance with the Code of Ethics. We thought it would be nice to bring it to the Finance Committee and simply ask for your endorsement of the GFOA Code of Ethics, and then begin that, you know, to be part of the Finance Department operations.
Questions from the members?
I just want to say that thank you for the article. I found it informative, and it sounds like a great organization to be part of, and certainly it's an honor to be recognized by them year after year, so thank you for all of that.
Indeed. A motion to endorse the Code of Ethics?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the endorsement?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Thank you very much. The motion passes. And then we'll move on with Director Halib again. She's come forward with the current interest rate environment, with the opportunity to do some refunding of our debt obligation. So Director Halib, please go ahead.
Thank you. So the city has a number of bond issues outstanding. This chart shows the different bond issues in the columns and shows the funding source of that debt service, and it shows the principal and interest payments remaining due on those bond issues by fiscal year. The city's financial advisory firm, which is Spear Financial, who assists the city in doing financial analysis of its bond issues, and I work together probably every year, just take a look at the outstanding bond issues, the current bond market, to see whether or not any of the city's outstanding obligations could benefit from a refunding, which is similar to refinancing your mortgage. You're simply taking advantage of lower interest rates, issuing new bonds to pay off the old bonds, and then you have the new bond debt service at a lower interest rate. The city did a significant refunding in two thousand and eleven. A lot of the city's outstanding debt was refunded in two thousand and eleven, so there haven't been a lot of opportunities. A few years ago, we did refinance the special service area twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-nine bonds. That was of significant benefit, because it's actually the, the property owners in those special service areas that were paying the debt service, so they benefited from the lower interest rate. So based on a current assessment of bond market conditions, it appears that the city could benefit from a refunding of certain bond issues. What I've included on the far right is the current projected savings based on current market conditions. You can see that on an annual basis, it's not a significant reduction in debt service. However, over the time period of the refunding issue, they're projecting about one-point-one million dollars in real savings, net present value of which is about nine-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars. So it's real money. It is spread over a number of years, but it does appear that the city could benefit. So we're just here this evening to get Finance Committee approval to proceed. We begin working with Spear Financial and the city's bond council, Chapman and Cutler, preparing the preliminary official statement, preparing to go to Moody's for a bond rating. We would have this on the November twelfth budget workshop agenda to walk through in more detail, and then we would hope to go to market before the end of the calendar year.
So that's, is that, is that a net number? I'm sure that, that going to bond council and all of that is, there's some expense involved.
So this is a net of bond issuance costs.
It is.
So this is a net number, and I've worked with Spear Financial long enough to know that they're fairly conservative, so provided there was no significant change in the bond market, I think we would do better than this. Maybe not significantly, but I, I do know that they tend to give us conservative estimates.
So I remember, Elizabeth, that we've, that we had done, we paid some bonds off early. I know we've done that since, but it sounds like this is the first time we've done this on this scale since, to refinance since eleven. Is that when you said we did it last?
Correct. Other than the SSA bonds, yes, we haven't done a, a major refunding since.
Is there any reason to be cautious? It looks like a terrifically good idea to me.
No, there really isn't any. I mean, you could, you could, we competitively bid our bond issues, so we could find that something, you know, either nationally or internationally could happen to interfere with the bond market between now and the official auction date for the bonds, but provided we time it well and nothing significant happens, we should see the savings. You can always choose not to issue the bonds, so you can get the quotes. If something happens, they don't come in, then you simply reject the bids.
Okay. Good.
Two, two questions. In terms of the timing, as I understood you, if everything goes smoothly, you would be looking to go to market end of the year, which says beginning of next year, we could start realizing the savings you've talked about.
Correct. The current model shows the first reduction in debt service would occur in FY twenty-one.
And I'm assuming there's a cost, though, in doing a refinancing. Is that factored into your numbers? So these are net numbers after anticipated costs to do that?
That's correct. It would be after all bond issuance costs.
Very good.
Should we top them up?
Should we what?
Should we borrow more?
We could always borrow more. It has an effect on our property tax value.
Have that conversation on November twelfth, but...
I mean, should caveat, not interested in jeopardizing the rating.
Right. Right. Well, certainly, when you, at the Capital Budget Workshop on November twelfth, when we begin to look at the five-year proposed CIP plan, there is a desire, yes, we could certainly either try to sell them at the same time as A and B issues, would probably delay it into the first quarter of two thousand and twenty, or we could just issue it as two separate issues, but...
And I think, this is a response, I think there's two issues. One is our rating, and the director has some metrics as to what additional borrowing would do to our rating, and the second one is the interest cost on our property tax measure coming up for next year, so.
It could also affect the rate, then if we borrow more.
Other questions?
I just had one, I'm sorry to, my recollection from my days sitting in, in Alderman Morris's seat, is that not all of these bonds are prepayable at any time. So part of what we, part of the reason why we haven't done a lot of this in the last few years is because we had a number of bonds that had no call, had no call feature that we could take advantage of. So now we're coming into another series of bonds where there's the ability to prepay, so.
Absolutely correct.
Alderman notes?
Would we be keeping the same amortization schedule, or looking to modify that at all?
One thing I've asked Spear to do between now and November twelfth is to work with me on potential different modeling, where we might see more of the savings in the earlier years. You would give up some overall savings, but it might provide some additional cap in, in maybe the next five-year window. So we want to do that analysis, which is why we, we didn't plan a detailed presentation tonight, but we will do that on November twelfth, to look at different, different options that you might want to pursue as part of the refunding and, and actually changing the, this looks at just replacing the bonds in the year they're currently maturing.
Good questions. Others? If not, I'll entertain a motion, I mean, as read, authorize staff to proceed with preparation for a potential refunding of a portion of the city's outstanding general obligation bonds.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That takes us down to other business. There was a flash report, and if anyone has questions on the flash report that Director Halib sent out? If not, I think we'll move on to opportunities for the public to address the Finance Committee. Anyone interested in talking to us? Apparently not. Thank you. That brings us to the end of our meeting, a little bit earlier than thirty minutes. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you. We'll take a short break and hand the gavel over to the mayor, so in about five minutes, we'll reconvene for the city council meeting.
You run a mean, moody...
Commercial, very efficient.
Very efficient.[1475.15]
Very traditional.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our agenda is reports of the city officers, and I will have a couple of comments. First, our HR Director, Dushay Kalmar, has received recognition from the International Public Management Association for Human Resources, recognizing her as a senior certified professional. This prestigious recognition is well-deserved, and I'm proud to see that Dushay's skill sets and abilities, which contribute so much to the successful functioning of the City of Lake Forest, are recognized by outside peer organizations. So please join me in congratulating Dushay. I don't see her out there, but well-deserved. Just another example of our city staff, our executive staff, just performing at the very leading edge of this industry. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager. Acting City Manager Mike Strong will make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of quick announcements here, and I'll ask Susan to kind of hop, put a slide up. Last Thursday, city staff participated in a recognition ceremony officially launching the state's first community solar project in Elgin, Illinois. You may recall that back in July, we talked about this opportunity, and the council had authorized the staff to negotiate some subscription agreements to enroll some city comEd accounts in this project that would provide a 10% savings on our energy supply costs. So the city, along with seven other municipalities, joined Rainy Solar at their facility there. And a photo on the right shows the actual facility. There's about 3,700 solar panels on top of that facility, 120,000 square foot roof with them, 187 of those we've been able to subscribe to, so pretty specific detail. But these are some photos from the event. It was a great event. There were about 125 that were there, and we've put some resources online. I will tell you, since we wrote this article, we've gotten quite a bit of interest from the public and the residents that are interested. We want to know more. We want to learn about this. Well, we have some resources on our website. There's a link at the bottom here that they can go to to view more. ComEd has also released some resources as well on their website. So we'll have that information out online for residents to go to if they want to learn more about community solar. But since we were the first to this, I would like to invite the mayor up to receive special recognition. So if he'd join me now. But it was a lot of fun, and I'll say the other communities are on board. We had about 100, we asked for about 120,000 kilowatts. We got about half of that, so we're on our way. But we'll certainly have more opportunities in the future. This is just the first, so looking forward to that.
It's not as big as it is.
I don't know if he's here.
Saving money.
Paperweight.
The second announcement is, well, fall is here, and while fall greets us with seasonal treats like pumpkin spice lattes and football, well, at least the former, you know, it's a great time for family fun. So I thought it would be a good idea to maybe have our, Sally Swarthought, our Director of Parks Recreation Forestry, talk about a few fun events coming up yet this season.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. I'm just, as Mike said, I'm here to give you an update on some of the things that are coming up as we wind through the fall season. Excuse me. The recreation staff has been busy planning a couple of different activities for the community. The first one on our list happens this Thursday, October 24th, at 10:00 a.m. We will be doing a guided tour of Forest Park. You're going to see descriptions of the native trees, the plants, and the wildlife that live through, live there. It's, it'll be about a 30-minute stroll. It's in conjunction with the Go Lake County Health Initiative, Go Lake Forest, where partner. And so please come out. We will be meeting, I believe, in the South Beach parking lot, the upper lot, and then we'll take a great tour through Forest Park. The next event we're hosting is this Friday evening. It's our annual Halloween Tricks and Treats. This particular party is for three- to nine-year-olds. It's hosted at the recreation center throughout the entire recreation center. We offer a haunted zoo, spooky games in the gym, a haunted hayride if the weather so permits. We do some storytelling with them. We provide a science lab with some ooey gooey things to experiment with. And then we also provide refreshments. It's a two-and-a-half-hour opportunity to just come out dressed in your costumes and have a lot of fun as a family. On the following shortly behind Saturday and Sunday, we're hosting the Halloween spectacular regatta, again, another annual event. It is the opportunity for young sailors from all over the Midwest to get out on our lake and sail. And yes, it will be cold, but we promise to keep them warmed up with some chili and some taffy apples and opportunities to carve pumpkins. There will also be a costume contest. That one will take place at 9:00 on Sunday morning, and results will there follow. So if you get a chance, please stop down by the lake. You can park at the north end and walk in. How lovely to say that. And just come see what we're doing. It's a lot of fun. I actually had the opportunity to witness them practicing this past Saturday, and it was glorious to see all those boats out on the water. And Dinner with Santa. Why are we talking about December now? This is just a quick reminder to the community that we have actually opened up the ticket sales for Dinner with Santa, December 7th and 8th. We host it in an enclosed and heated Northcroft Pavilion. We host two seedings, one at 4:00 and one at 6:00. It's for all ages, and we have actually had all ages attend. The folks come in, they do a craft, they frost cookies with Mrs. Claus, they get a story with Santa, and they have dinner, and it's a really fun and lovely event. So I hope everybody has the opportunity to go online at the City of Lake Forest on our website. You'll click to the foundation and register for this program. And that's what I have coming up.
Thanks, Sally. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mike. Next item is committee reports, and the Finance Committee report, we need to acknowledge receipt of the fiscal year 2019 Treasurer's Report, which we just discussed in the Finance Committee. Is, would you like to make a present, I guess? Lorraine, you're going to?
We're going to let the Assistant Director, Hall, take over.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. Earlier at the Finance Committee, we presented the city's Treasurer's Report, and just be happy to answer any question, further questions you may have.
No questions from the council. There is an opportunity for public comment on the Treasurer's Report. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak or ask a question about this? Okay, they're being done. Then I would entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the fiscal year 2019 Treasurer's Report.
So moved.
Second.
And then we need a roll call vote, roll call vote for that?
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschla?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. The next item on our agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Is there anybody here who would like to speak about a non-agenda item? Yes, sir.
My name is Larry Crowne, 237 Washington Circle, for just about 90 years. I have a safety concern that I'd like to bring up. I'm sure all of you have been down on our wonderful beach and our new driveway coming up. But if you noticed, you get up to Lake Road, the city has removed the stop sign. I have been traveling down Lake Road. Traffic comes up from the lake, right on the Lake Road, without even slowing down or anything. Also, if traffic is coming from Forest Park, making the right turn, maybe to go on the Lake Road or go down to the beach, and they make that turn, all of once a car comes up from the lake, I would like to see a stop sign placed back up there. As I say, I've been a resident for almost 90 years. There's always been a stop sign there. But with the new construction, that sign is missing. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I'm not sure that we were focused on that. But we have a whole, we have a traffic safety committee that will, that considers all these things, and so we'll refer it to them. And then Mike Thomas, the Director of Public Works, who's sitting right behind you, is taking, taking notes. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Mike, any, any immediate response? No? Okay. Okay, great. Other members of the public?
Yes.
Deb?
Mayor and Alderman, I just wanted to bring to your attention one activity that we're going to try doing...
Please, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Deb Fisher. I'm a Realtor in town. I'm a past president of the Chamber, and I'm involved in various volunteer organizations in town. I just want to bring to your attention a challenge, kind of, that we'd like to have over the holiday season, and we'd like to communicate it to the, to the community. We're trying to really focus on the vitality of our shopping, dining, eating, drinking establishments here. And we really want to bring people's attention, both residents in the community as well as residents outside, or people outside the community, to what wonderful things we have here, the unique kind of shopping opportunities and the unique special events that we have. So we've created, some of this has been on social media. We're kind of cleaning it up a little bit, but a community challenge, shop local, think local, dine and drink local, and we want people to spread the word on social media as well. Kara Garrison Meyer, who owns the Forest Bootery, was also involved in this and some of the other businesses. The idea is to try to remind your friends to do this around town, and then really spread the word on social media. Take pictures. Put it out there on social media and get the word out of all the amazing things we have here, the things that you love about Lake Forest as well. So that's pretty much it, and I'm happy to answer questions. But otherwise, we'd just like to make you aware of it. We will be posting in the shop windows and online and in Facebook and things like that.
Thank you. Alderman Moreno?
I would just like to send a big thank you to you, Deb, because you've been just a phenomenal champion of our community in so many ways. And, you know, the events at the Telegraph Road Train Station, just all over town, you've really been leading us to more fun, and that's great. Thank you.
And I'm not sure, we haven't met since this event occurred, but the Lake Forest Then and Now Car Show last, a week ago, Sunday, was a huge success. We had over 100 cars with some truly exceptional, very rare and valuable equipment. At about 2:00, I would guess there were at least 1,000 people there. I mean, the whole parking lot was completely jammed. I got to actually pick the mayor's trophy, so that was kind of fun for me. It was a 1926 Bentley three-liter race car that, and this is the 100th anniversary of Bentley cars, so it was fitting. And actually, at the Pebble Beach Concorde, they celebrated Bentley as the name, the featured mark. So there were a number of cars to choose from, any one of which would have been a worthy winner. But, but that's another example of things that are happening. That was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, an effort to try to move the center of gravity a little bit to the West, and with great success. So the other thing I'd like to point out is, in the, in the vein of shop local, many of our local retailers have their own websites, and you can buy things on their websites. So you don't have to come into town to shop local. You can shop local online, and you don't have to pay Amazon their intermediary fee, or get hit with all those different ads. If you want to buy a pair of shoes at Forest Bootery, you can go on their website and you can do it. And so, I mean, we all go to Amazon. It's sort of, it's a reflex action, and, you know, we can, we can try to break ourselves with that habit. It'd be good for our local retailers. Any other comments? Okay. Next item, any, anybody else from the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
No, I'm apart.
Okay, the next item on our list is items for omnibus, omnibus vote consideration. So I'll read them all. There are six. First is approval of the October 7th, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Second is the approval of revisions to the city investment policy. Third is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lake Forest and the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services regarding enhanced rates for ambulance services and authorization to make required payments to Illinois Department of Health and Family Services consistent with the intergovernmental agreement. Fourth is approve, approval of an addendum to include new equipment to the current heating, ventilation, and air conditioning preventive maintenance contract awarded to First Point Mechanical Services LLC for an additional sum of $7,221.50. Fifth is approval of a first amendment to the restated agreement relating to the Gorton Center. And sixth is award of a two-year contract for seasonal brochure printing for the Recreation Department as approved by the Park and Rec Board. Are there any of these items that any member of the council would like to discuss separately? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the omnibus agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a roll call, so my fault.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschla?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Next item on our agenda is ordinances. The first and only is consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 40 titled Governmental Ethics of the City Code. We had a first reading of this two weeks ago. There was a pretty lengthy discussion. Some suggestions were taken back to the legal committee. The legal committee made some, I would call them modest, changes to the proposed language. And so now it's back before us for a final vote. Our city attorney, Julie Tappendorf, is going to give us a brief overview to start.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked a lot last time about the changes that we worked on and the legal committee worked on over the last 16 months, so I won't go into details about that. But I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I probably should have fleshed out a little better last time. And that, that was the, I guess, the precipitating issue or event. One of the reasons that, that this was first looked at was because the city, there was an impression by the city or perception that the current league or the current ethics ordinance doesn't really have a lot of teeth to it when it came to conflicts of interest. That was the first thing, I think, that the, that the legal committee started talking about when we took a look at the ethics ordinance was there were regulations. They weren't as clear as they could be, but more concerning to the legal committee, and this is when you get a room full of lawyers together, is to look at, okay, we have a regulation. you get a roomful of lawyers together, is to look at, okay, we have a regulation, what's the effect of that? What's the penalty? What's the remedy? How, how do we enforce this? And is there actually any enforcement to some of the provisions? And so, stepping back and looking at it from that perspective, one of the, the main goals of the legal committee was to put some teeth into the ordinance. And that's really what you have before you, specifically in two areas. One is the area of the local conflicts of interest, which, under the current ordinance, the local conflicts of interest really mirror the state conflicts of interest, which only apply to the officer or the employee, and don't cover any of the interests that the, that the employee may have through a relative. There was some language in there, that if you had a relative who might have an interest, or it said family member, but it wasn't defined, that you would simply disclose it. But there wasn't anything that prohibited or prevented action by the employee or the officer. In other words, if there was an interest of a family member, undefined under the ordinance, the officer or the employee would need only disclose it, but could still vote on it. That was a significant problem in the legal committee's view. And closing that gap, or that issue, I think was probably the most significant change that you see in tonight's ordinance, was to make sure that the local conflicts of interest were clear, that officers and employees would understand when they would apply, and what those defined terms meant. So, we understood whose interest, and when you, when you would have a conflict of interest, and importantly, actually have an action or conduct prohibition on what you could do in that case, so beyond a disclosure. So, that was a pretty significant change. We had a defined term that was recommended to the city council. Since that meeting, or since the last meeting, the legal committee took another look at it, and added a couple of other defined terms to address some of today's relationships, domestic partners, civil union partners, that was added. The other area that the, that the legal committee spent some time on was addressing issues of appearance of impropriety. So, in those situations that were not legislated, that were not necessarily defined, the legal, legal committee thought it was important to add language to the policy and purpose, which was the subsection D, to address situations that didn't fall squarely within a box, that weren't legislated, but that might create a perception that somebody could not be impartial, or could not exercise good judgment. And in those cases, then, the, the ordinance, the regulation, would require the officer or the employee to look within themselves and make a determination whether they could be impartial. And if not, that they would exercise good judgment and not take action. The last thing that, that, and you'll see tonight that there were some tweaks, which I think were good changes to D, to really strengthen that, to make it even clearer. So, that language is in front of you, you can see it in the, in the red line. And then, last, the legal committee, and I mentioned this last time, wanted to make sure that the process, the complaint process, was easy to follow, would be much more efficient and streamlined, so there wasn't a six to nine month, it was really unclear how long it would take from time of filing of an ethics complaint, to go through all of the procedures to actually get a decision. And so, the, one of the recommendations was to make that process much clearer, make it move much more quickly, so there would be a resolution, and define which body would receive the complaint, but also would hear the ethics complaint. So, I think that was a really good change, to say that Lake Forest takes these issues very seriously. We want to make sure that there's a, a very clear process, a fair process, for people to file a complaint, and then have, have a resolution of that. That's really all I wanted to just kind of update the city council between the last meeting and this meeting.
Thank you very much. As the liaison to the legal committee, Alderman Rumel wanted to make a couple of comments, so let her speak next.
Thank you, Attorney Tappendorf, for clearing up any misconception that the proposed ordinance before the council this evening is in any way less strict than the existing city ethics ordinance. For those of you new to the council, and residents here and at home, I'd also like to give a little background into why this ordinance has been under review. In the course of some delicate deliberations at the council level these past two years, I and other council members looked to the city's ethics ordinance and conflict of interest regulations for guidance. What we found was an ordinance that lacked any teeth. As City Attorney Tappendorf has already stated, it was really a morass of inconsistent definitions and undefined terms in a jumbled order. I began marking up and pointing out some of the issues to the then-mayor and the council. In order to address these concerns, Mayor Lansing, sixteen months ago, asked the legal committee to review the ordinance and make some recommendations back to the council. What is before the council tonight is the work product of those sixteen months. Don't get me wrong, just because a project takes a long time does not mean we got it right. However, the current ordinance was reviewed section by section, and in many cases, word for word, by a team of lawyers dedicated to producing the best possible product. The initial reviewing team consisted of the chairman of the legal committee, city attorney Tappendorf, Mayor Lansing, and me. Three attorneys in that round. The team looked at and compared ethics ordinances and ethics guidelines from such cities and villages as Highland Park, Glencoe, Glenview, and, in this most recent review, the city of Evanston, Lake County's brand-new ethics ordinance, and the model ordinance from the Illinois Attorney General's office. The subcommittee of the legal committee presented the initial draft of the, to the entire legal committee for review. This meant that an additional four attorneys reviewed the proposed ordinance. Remarkably, following discussion, the ordinance passed out of the legal committee with a unanimous consensus. It may have been the first time in recent history that seven attorneys ever agreed on anything. But this is another example of the unparalleled spirit of volunteerism in this community, that professionals of this caliber are willing to donate their time to a committee such as this. I will say again, I'm glad we didn't have to pay them for their time. I felt most fortunate to be appointed to this committee, because being somewhat of a government wonk myself, it was my absolute pleasure to listen to these legal minds, experienced, seasoned attorneys digest this ordinance in the detail they did. Discussions were deep, thought-provoking, and unfailingly stimulating. Nonetheless, when questions were raised at the last council meeting about the proposed ordinance, the council voted to have a second reading of this ordinance, to be certain all questions were addressed, and all aldermen had additional weeks to consider the proposal and any possible changes. I speak for myself, but I think probably for the whole legal committee as well, when I say the committee was most willing, at the mayor's request, to again review the proposed ordinance in the light of the suggestions and questions offered in the intervening weeks. I want to state upfront that the committee is grateful for the number of thoughts raised by Alderman Bushman, which were thoroughly reviewed and discussed by the legal committee this past Thursday, and in some cases incorporated into the revised, recommended ordinance before you tonight. To assist and inform the discussion, the legal committee once again had before them excerpted relevant portions of the ordinance from the other cities and villages I previously mentioned for comparison, including their introductory or purpose statements, as well as their differing definitions of relative, and in some cases, family members. They also thoroughly discussed Alderman Bushman's suggestions, and even a few of my own. The net result of the legal committee's thoughts from these discussions this past Thursday are redlined and before you tonight for your consideration. I would like to reflect some of the discussion and reasoning around the consensus reached by the legal committee. Perhaps the most prominent issue, and the one with real legal repercussions, centered on the definition of relative. Alderman Bushman wanted to toss a larger net into the sea, to capture more individuals that one might consider as one's relatives. This past Thursday, at the meeting of the legal committee, the committee noted that there were two competing considerations to balance in automatically recusing an alderman from voting. On the one side of the scale is the need for the public to have confidence in the integrity of their government. And on the other side of the scale is the right of constituents to be represented by their duly-elected officials. Whenever a public official is recused, that official's constituents are in effect disenfranchised. This is the reason why very many communities and governmental agencies do not have far-reaching rules as to relatives and friends. The committee discussed the nature of our community, and a characteristic that makes this place, a place so many of us are so proud to call home. Generations of families live here. Many of our children have chosen to return to raise their families here. Residents have long friendships and acquaintances that may stretch back for generations as well. Many of us have served on various charitable boards, not only in Lake Forest, but in the Chicagoland area at large. The question is whether these relations and friendships are so close as to require a mandatory recusal. The committee specifically discussed the relationship of a cousin, and numerous other remote relatives, and in fact, the fact that some cousins and other relatives may be close, while others may have such a distant relationship that they hardly know one another. A similar discussion was had about step relatives. A stepchild may be close, if raised in a family from a young age, but conversely, a stepchild from a later-in-life marriage may not be close at all. The committee felt a real reluctance to over-legislate to cover every possible what-if, or as one member referred to it, the maybes. There will always be maybes that we cannot legislate away. At some point, it has to be a decision for the individual's conscience. The committee came to a similar conclusion regarding close personal friendships or business relationships. They felt these were too indefinite. The decision to recuse oneself in these instances is a subjective one best made by the individual. There was in fact a recounting of a commission member where the opposite issue came up. A commission member recused himself because he felt he disliked the petitioner to such an extent that he could not be impartial in his vote. These are the types of judgment calls the committee felt should be left to the individual. They felt the balance of creating a rule that would objectively result in a recusal in a case where the relationship may not in fact be significant enough to taint the integrity of the vote, was not worth the price of disenfranchising residents. There was a real desire not to over-legislate to cover every conceivable relationship, and not to create situations where virtually every decision is subject to legal challenge due to remote relationships. A review of the definition of relative or family member from the other municipalities showed them to be too variable to conclude any preferred definition. It was pointed out that the state limits a conflict of interest only to direct financial interests between the person and the official. The legal committee did discuss and recommend the addition of the terms "domestic partner" and "civil union partner" to the definition of relative. You will see those terms added in the redlined version before you tonight. The legal committee and the city's legal council again discussed that the absolute prohibition contained in the ordinance represents the lowest bar to pass when considering whether one should recuse oneself. The higher bar is expressed in paragraph D of the introductory policy and purpose provision, which I quote, "The policies set forth in this chapter are not intended to govern every circumstance, and officers and employees are expected to exercise good judgment and to avoid situations or circumstances that may create an appearance of impropriety." On Thursday, the legal committee did discuss adding the last sentence you will now see before you in a redlined version. This is added to paragraph D. It states, "This becomes particularly important where there is a business relationship, close personal friendships, or family relationship." They felt it could serve as a reminder that these relationships, even beyond familial ones, should also be considered by officials when considering a recusal. It should be pointed out, these are policy issues that are rightly determined by these duly-elected representatives on the council, not representatives of an appointed committee. The legal committee did not want to leave the impression that there is a legally right or wrong answer to these questions, as long as the policy is no less restrictive than state law. Reasonable minds may differ, as manifest in the fact that ethics ordinances vary widely from municipality to municipality. In line with Alderman Bushman's suggestions, the legal committee also discussed eliminating paragraphs B and C of the policy and purpose section. These paragraphs are from the original ethics ordinance, and are unique to our Lake Forest ordinance. Again, this language, whether left in or deleted, has no real bearing on any legal aspect of the ordinance. It's what lawyers might call dicta, but the legal committee felt it was instructive in the same way dicta is instructive in court opinions. Specifically, they felt it provided guidance to the additional considerations reflected in paragraph D, and should remain in the document. Paragraph A of the policy and purpose section is also very instructive, and is quite similar to provisions found in the ethics ordinances of other municipalities. The redlined revised ethic ordinance is before you this evening. I've tried to summarize the discussions of my esteemed colleagues on the legal committee to the best of my ability. Again, thank you for the privilege of serving on the legal committee with these inspiring residents, and thank you to Alderman Bushman for his suggestions, and to each of my fellow aldermen for their careful deliberations and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rumel. Alderman Bushman?
Alderman Rumel, you gave an excellent presentation. It's most appreciated, and it's a reflection of all the work and the dedication of yourself and committee, the mayor. And this is a sort of process that I'm so happy to see has occurred. I may be a little biased with the legal committee and its wonderful work, having been on the committee for six years, and chairman for four of those years. But, you know, they do the best they can, and they've done an excellent job. There's no question about it. The policy we have before us is a significant improvement, both in substance, and also in style, readability, and structure. I did, in having gone through it when I had the opportunity to do so, maybe being a lawyer, or whatever else you want to say, I did find four areas that I thought maybe would be appropriate for improvement, and did bring them up to the council. And it's, it's wonderful that we had this two-week period, not only to see what the citizens were saying, but also to give the legal committee an opportunity to look at those again, and happy to see that the two, two of the four, you know, are being incorporated, and I think it does make for a better read. And it is important to understand that, you know, these issues of how best to define the scope of conflicts, what sort of considerations, are judgment calls. It's not a reflection on anyone's ethics, it's not a reflection on the decision-maker and what we say is right or wrong. These are judgment calls, and should be reflected as such. I'm certainly, I'm quite impressed with what has occurred, and even though the two other changes that I had recommended are not there, I see the excellence of the work and the logic of what you've done, so I certainly can support what the legal committee has tendered now to the council.
Thank you. Alderman Morris?
I just want to thank the legal committee and Alderman Rumel for an excellent summary of what the work went into this. It's remarkable.
Thank you.
I did receive an email from Alderman Bushman. I did receive an email from Alderman Bushman. I appreciated the Highland Park comments in there, and I forwarded that on to the mayor and the city attorney that it would be, I think, helpful to include some of that, and I see it's in there. So I'm a strong supporter in what you've done, so, thank you.
Any other comments or observations from council members? Okay, then we have an opportunity for public comment on this. Ms. Desmond?
Ms. Desmond, 1681 Yale Court. First of all, I'd like to thank you for delaying the vote on this important ordinance to allow for public comment and for further review. Secondly, I would like to express my appreciation to the legal committee and for the mayor and the council's willingness to incorporate suggestions and to modify a final recommendation. And lastly, I believe this revised ethic code reflects significant improvements over the existing ordinance and demonstrates this city council's high standards for ethical governance, so I thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public would like to comment on this matter? I'd return it to the council for a motion to grant final reading of ordinance amending chapter 40, titled Government Ethics of the City Code.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we have a roll call.
Do we have a roll call? Oh, yep, sorry.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nae, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. We need to vote on the approval of a professional services agreement with Baxter and Woodman for designs and specifications of the Burr Oak Storm Sewer Project in the amount of $189,000.
Take it away. Thank you. Good evening. I'll remember members of the city council. This evening, staff is requesting city council approval for design services for the Burr Oak Storm Sewer, Storm Sewer Study, and design and analysis. I'll do a quick, a quick, few brief slides. Background, discussion of the 2019 Stormwater Master Plan Update, review of the project area, the RFP process that we went through, and then obviously our recommendation, and open up for questions. Burr Oak area up near the condominiums on Northwestern Avenue has flooded for many years, many, many years. Street flooding, yard flooding, home flooding. Typically, that is the first area that our water sewer guys will go to if we're receiving a heavy rainfall. They know, and they can tell by Thomas Place, Burr Oak, Western, how bad the storm is. So, we, we know that it's a problem, and because of that, we respond quickly, do what we can. We've worked with homeowners in the area to try and educate them on some things that they can do as well, but there's a lot of deficiency in the pipe sizes in that neighborhood. With the Kelm Scott Park Development Project, during that process, it was acknowledged then as well that yes, we have some things as a city that we need to do in that area. The Burr Oak area was identified in the Storm Sewer Update in 2014 as one of the 10 projects that the city needed to work on and focus and address. The recent update to the stormwater plan that was presented at last month's workshop had the project listed as number one. So with regards to the stormwater update, these are six projects in priority, Burr Oak all the way through Gage Lane. This simply lists not only the priority, the estimated cost in today's dollars, and the number of properties that are impacted. You'll see the decimal points, and it's simply because the drainage areas are topographical. They're not specific to addresses, so I can't make an overall statement that says Laurel North to Alden or Tara, west to Green Bay. It's, it moves, it moves about. This then is the review of the project area. It encompasses the area west of the railroad tracks, and it also has some area on the east side, too. The area, the, the lines you see in red are those proposed pipe sizes and piping, excuse me, increase in pipe sizes that would be part of the project. You will see up on the, the right side, that area actually goes through the East Campus High School property. So, all of this is going to be presented to you at your budget meeting in November, and along with the entire capital plan, you as a finance committee at that meeting will then make decisions on which capital projects you would like us to pursue. So, this is, this is the Burr Oak, and if you so desire to pursue that, we have a lot of work ahead of us. Timing-wise, with high school, when they have graduation compared to when the fall sports begin, and on top of it, when Peter Baker closes his asphalt plant, there's just a lot of work that we need to get done. That is why we're asking for approval to begin design now. If council decides to delay the project a year or two, that's fine. The design will be, it will be used whenever. The RFP process, request for proposal, we published in the New Sun on the 26th, put it on our city website. We actually have a bidding system that our engineering department uses called Quest CDN. Goes out to hundreds and hundreds of contractors and engineers. They received it. We also sent the RFP notice and the RFP package to 10 individual engineers. October 10th was the due date. We received proposals from three engineers. An RFP, similar to an invitation to bid, when you bid a project, you're looking simply for numbers. Yes, you ask for references, but if, when we bid equipment, it's low bid, as long as it meets the spec, we go. Request for proposal, we have part of that. Yes, cost is a big part, but we also look at other components. We want to make sure the firm understands the scope. The firm has done previous similar projects, has good references, et cetera. Those are all things that we take into account internally when we review these proposals. After doing such, then, we arrived at the recommendation that Baxter, Woodman would be the firm to do this project. If city council approves this evening, Baxter, Woodman will have two surveying crews on-site tomorrow morning. The schedule is literally that tight. So with that, I'll ask, entertain any questions you may have.
Mike, I'm not sure I completely understand how long this project will take, once it's not now. I know that this project is the design phase, but you're talking about trying to work around the school schedule next year. What's the?
If, if finance committee in November, if you decide that this is a project that you want to pursue next year, we would have the design completed by mid-March. We would need to review it internally, and then place the project out to bid, review the bids with Public Works Committee, come to city council, get approval. All of that takes time. We have a pre-construction meeting, we'll have a meeting with the residents, we have to do a notice for the contractor, they need to bring in material. All of that, when we speak to various contractors, they believe they can get it done by the fall. But, that east side of this project, that McKinley area in Willow up near the high school, there's a defined, we have, we have the day after graduation to the day fall sports start, and we've got to get out of there. And it's, it's just, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, so.
So it'll be, it would be sequenced that way, then? It wouldn't be both?
Depending upon which of our contractors selected.
How much they have?
Depending upon the contractor, how many crews they have. If they're able to have a crew on the east side and the west side, that's great. If they put everybody on the east side and get that knocked out, and then jump over to the west side, that's, that's fine as well. The west side isn't, all due respect, as imperative as the, as the east side.
And what, now what about, it looks like on that, with the red line, it looks like that goes under Woodland there. Is there any, does that impact?
Actually, it, it actually drains, this is very interesting when we look at the drainage of this entire area. So this area approximately is Alden and Tara Lane to the north, Northwestern Avenue as well, Green Bay to the west, and north of Laurel Avenue. That area drains, it drains actually under the tracks, under McKinley, goes through the parking lot at the high school, makes its way over to Willow, where there's a ravine, into Willow, it heads north into Lake Bluff under Sheridan Road, heads east down Witchwood, Moffett, into the lake. So, it's, that's the process, that's where it all, that's where it all ends up. But, through the modeling, there are many pipes, as you can see, that are small, that need to be upsized to handle the flooding, the reoccurring flooding.
But so, so Woodland is of course a key intersection there as well.
This, this will not impact?
Won't impact Woodland or anything with the train tracks or anything like that?
No, no. We will have to, I will say this, we're going to have to think about the construction route, how this is going to work. We'll have to talk to Lake Bluff as far as if we can go through Green Bay. They've got that railroad bridge as well, and I know that bridge is getting older, so we, we may end up having to use McKinley and Woodland to go in and out, but we're going to have to, we're not there yet.
Alderman Rumel?
Is, is the, are the railroads involved? Do we have to speak to them? We're going under the tracks, right?
If, if we have to increase pipe size under the tracks or add an additional pipe, yes, then we'll need to get their permission and get an easement. Right now, the plan does not call for that. We have two separate pipes going under the tracks.
Of sufficient size.
The modeling, they believe can, that those two pipes are sufficient.
Jim Edison?
Does this put extra pressure on the Lake Bluff sewer system as a result of the increase?
No, it, we, we went and looked at the ravine on Willow, and as that moves into Lake Bluff, it becomes actually a very large ravine. Behind Ravine Park Drive in Lake Forest, makes its way north under Sheridan Road, that's a very large ravine. And then behind Ravine Forest Drive in Lake Bluff, but no, it, it will not, it will not.
Alderman Notes?
In anticipation of the disruption of these communities, is this work being done largely by excavation or horizontal boring? What is, what do residents have to look forward to?
You know, that's a good question, and I think it's, it's going to have, it's going to depend upon where these pipes are going to be routed. If we can directional bore some of the piping, we will, but some of these larger pipes, it's going to have to be an open excavation. If there's an eight-inch line, we can directional or 10-inch line, that can be easily directional bored. But when we get into 1824, 3642, those are, those are open cut. Say on the other side, they, these contractors are not, they, they can get things done pretty quickly. If they're giving, if they're given the space, if they're given the space to be able to stage their material and have it there, and not bring it in, but have it there, they'll be able to get it, get it through, get it done.
Other questions? Alderman Gashkarian?
Thank you. I know we tend to look right, but every now and again, we need to glance left.
Mike, at our last workshop, I know that both Alderman Rumel and I had some concerns about the rainfall modeling, and we've come to find out, there are standards within the industry that we, we typically have to go off of, correct? And therefore, I know it was both my concern and Alderman Rumel's concern that, I know we're in a preliminary phase, but as, if it's the will of the council as we move forward, does Baxter, Woodman, if that's indeed who we choose to move forward with, is it within our purview to say, instead of a 38-inch pipe, we want a 42, or instead of a 42, we need a 54? And again, if we increase those sizes, going back to Alderman Beidler, I think, had brought this up again, working with UP and the easement, and if we do need to upsize those pipes, is that going to kind of put this process in first gear, so to speak, knowing that sometimes going out and dealing with UP out in Omaha is not the easiest process?
To answer your question as far as up-sizing pipes, yes, we can. We did on our last project. We simply come back and we will refer to the inundation level and how many feet above curb or grade. If we think it is close, where it's not giving us as much relief as there should be, we ask the question, what if we go up a size? And they rerun the model. So, we do that internally at staff, and our city engineer does that as well, to make sure we are getting the coverage in the end, that you're not going to have flooded streets all over the place.
I personally would hate for us to go through this whole process and find out that we got to a point where it wasn't quite good enough, and given the capital expenditure and the process, that, you know, we do the job as, as absolutely well as possible.
Included in this proposal is an analysis for 25 and a 50-year. So, our storm sewer system, majority of municipal storm sewer systems are designed for a 10-year storm. That schedule, Schedule 70, has been updated to essentially say how much rain per hour, those numbers have increased. That schedule, since it's been updated, has been incorporated into this plan, but included in this proposal will be their analysis of if you want to make it reflect a 25-year or 50. I caution everyone on that because the rest of our system is 10, and in most areas, it works just fine. So, yes, we have the ability to increase the size of the pipes, we have and we will if need be, but we are noting Alderman Rumel's comments and yours at the workshop, we included that in the RFP, saying let's, let's take a look at that, so that's included.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Preschlack?
Mike, I have a question. The approach to the project and the design work you're going to do is really complete and standalone irrespective of, of the timing of the project. Is that correct?
That is correct.
If we decide not to do it for some reason, I'm not saying we are, it's still valid work, it's going to be a finished product that we can activate?
Without question.
At any time and not lose anything or incur costs because of the delay?
Without question. We would want to come back to you with an updated project cost, so if it's delayed a year, or two, or three, we would take that completed design and would want to bring that back to you to say, here's the current estimated cost, but yes, that can be, the design can be used at any point.
Alderman Moreno?
So, when the, when Baxter and Woodman does the analysis for the project, will they address the, the types, the degree, the intensity of, of flooding that's happened here, so that when we get to the point of spending the money, we know that spending that money is going to address the problem in its entirety?
Yes, they will. And in fact, at our upcoming Public Works Committee, I tentatively have them on the schedule to come in and review that Schedule 70 and the 10, 25, and 50-year, and what impacts those, those would have. So, yes, yes, we will.
And just a quick follow-on, and I realize that we have thought about using reserves for this 3.4-plus million expenditure, but if we're going out for a bond refinancing, this is the kind of thing I would tack on if we can, only because interest rates are so attractive, but I realize that a lot of analysis needs to go into that, and it's a different department.
Well, we also have a surplus?
I understand.
That we can allocate, so we don't, I'm not sure we need to borrow the money to do this.
Thank you.
Remember, we had that vote a couple of months ago about, you know, the, what to do with, now that we've reached our 76% or 77% reserve level, do we really need to keep going? And we decided not to keep going, so we can now take the surplus and apply it to some of these bigger projects.
And we have pension expenses and other things, so just trying to?
There's never enough money, no matter what, so. Other, other questions from the council? Okay? Members of the public, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment or ask a question about this project? Okay, there being none, I would return this to the council for a motion to approve a professional services agreement with Baxter and Woodman for design and specifications of the Burr Oak Storm Sewer Project in the amount of $189,000.
So moved. Second?
Roll call vote?
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nae, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think this is, this is actually a little editorial here. This is the kind of forward thinking that we need to have, because without doing this now, even though we haven't officially allocated the capital for the project, if we don't do this now, it's not going to get done next year, and it would probably have to slip another whole year because of some of the constraints that, that Mike Thomas was talking about. I did also, it did also occur to me, though, that if I did also, it did also occur to me, though, that if all goes well, IDOT's going to be down at Deer Path and 41 at the same time, and, so.
Tear the Band-Aid off, Mayor. Tear the Band-Aid off.
Send everyone to the west side.
Short, sharp shock, right?
But, but both of those projects will yield the great result. Alderman Notes said, what do people have to expect? If you just think long-term, less problem with flooding.
That's easy for you to say.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I think, this is, this is, I mean, we've, I mean, it is interesting, and then, now that five-plus years that I've been sitting here, more and more often, we're talking about water. I mean, and I think for most of us, a lot of the calls we get from neighbors are about water. I mean, water is a huge issue, and so to the extent that we can see what management we can afford, and we're doing it, it's, it's, it's great for everybody, but it sounds like next summer could be a little punishment.
The Forest Park bluffs, or? That's water.
That's water.
I mean, you know, it's, it's everywhere.
Lot of water issues, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. The next item on the agenda is additional items, comments by council members. Any council members have anything they'd like to speak about? Okay, there being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting is adjourned.